You're all set, Mr. Chairman?
Thanks, James. Okay, good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call the Anna Reynolds School Project Building Committee to order. It is 5:15 by my watch on July 8th, 2021. Jeff, I believe you're with us. Would you like to do the roll call?
Yes, members were asked to signify their presence when their name is called. Counselor Camillo.
Here.
Counselor Minor. Mr. Sylvia.
President.
Ms. Stam.
Here.
Ms. Dugan.
Here.
Mr. Wetzel.
Here.
Mr. Woods.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Jeff. Our next item is public participation, and I see we have nobody from the public.
Well, no one, yep.
Right, so... We will move right on to Architects Update, Item 4. And I know that we have Jennifer from Castle Booze and Paul with us, and I'm going to turn the meeting over to, I believe, Jennifer, and she's going to walk us through it. Jennifer, will you be able to... Do you need to share the screen?
I do, so I'm setting that up now.
Can you allow that to happen?
Already taken care of.
Thank you, James.
Yes, thank you very much for allowing us to share. Are you seeing...
No, we're just seeing you so far.
You're even.
You are screen sharing.
Yeah.
Please, screen one, share. Sorry, because I talk to myself. Oh, gosh. All right. Hmm, Paul.
So you had screen two option, you could share, go back up.
Okay, let me stop sharing, sorry. All right. Where is this?
Bottom, screen, screen share.
So that wasn't working. Oh, this is working.
Right there.
All right. I apologize.
There you go.
Okay, there we go. All right, um... So I needed to update you. I'd like to let you know where we're at with our concepts for the site and for the building. We have, I'm going to go over site plans first and what we've generated after meeting with the transportation department, the principal, security department as well. We observed the morning and afternoon conditions out of Anna Reynolds, and we saw some things that we think could be improved by a different circulation pattern, actually. So, quickly, I do have for reference this particular plan which shows the activities in the morning. And I'm sorry that Brennan White, he's our landscape architect who's been working on this, and he can't be with us tonight. He is on his vacation, and so I'm presenting on his behalf. But this is the morning routine, and the basic point of this is we observed that there's co-mingling of cars and buses in the morning coming in from reservoir. So this plan is upside down because we've always been looking at the building in this way. North is actually, there's our north arrow, north is down and south is up. Reservoir Road is along here, and Fen Road is up. Can you see my cursor, actually, the hand?
Yeah, we can see it.
Great. Um, so off of Reservoir Road, there's co-mingling of buses and parents in the morning. They both come in, so the red is where that co-mingling happens. The cars are typically dropping off students around the main entrance. The bus is in yellow, skirt by them on the other side, but then they have to connect again, and they're they're connected, going on this path, cars and buses working around each other. The cars go into the lower lot and then leave, but the buses, their ultimate destination here is to come in off of reservoir and get to the east side of the building, line up, and get the students off the buses in the morning. When the buses leave and the cars leave, they're traveling again together and exiting to Fen Road. In the afternoon, it's somewhat similar. There is quite a stack that we know that happens along Reservoir Road of cars. Even in the morning, too, not that there's so much a stack, but we've got cars and buses trying to get through on reservoir. It's, I think, a little more chaotic in the afternoon. But still, the same crossing of pathways here in red, buses and cars together. Cars do their thing, buses do their thing, but then they come back together again. The buses queue up in a double stack to pick up students while the cars travel in the lower lot, and then they come together again to do their exiting. Typically, the buses are, you know, all queued up and leaving all at once, so the buses generally get in a whole lineup. They're not quite mingled with cars, but that is everybody's exit. The buses do their thing, and I think the cars wait for the buses to leave. But we have some ideas on improvement for both the cars and buses, so that they're not having to dodge each other along the way, and they don't have that cross circulation going on. There won't be as much chaos on Reservoir Road, I guess. So, we were looking at having parents use the Reservoir Road access in the morning and in the evening, or in the afternoon. They'd use Reservoir Road, and cars would do a loop and come back out Reservoir Road. And then with buses, they'd use Fen, and they'd come in Fen, come in this drive, and then head back out. So we wouldn't really have mingling. The only mingling that could go on is, let's say, somebody needs to park in the lower lot. If staff needs to get over there, there would be potential of crossing, of cars continuing toward the bus loop. But, so during those arrival and dismissal times, there would be separation, full separation. A couple of items to note with this is there'd be a little bit of widening on your property line, but widening of the entrance of a reservoir to get the two-way traffic for the cars. There would be, we'd like to improve the front entrance way and create this sidewalk and lengthen this sidewalk area, so there's a longer queue of cars. Right now, they can't queue up so far. And then they end up sticking out onto this entrance drive. But if we can get a better queue of cars, it would lengthen that area. And there'd be a separation here, an island, with fencing, that's what this black line is. That fencing would help funnel people if you were, whether you were dropping off or if you were parking in this lot. If you wanted to go to the main entrance, you would cross at the crosswalk because the fence is only open at that position to let you through. It's not a free-for-all to go across at any point. We do like funneling and trying to make a safer route to the main entrance, should you need to park in a lot. So that is better for the queuing, and again, the buses are not even in this area at all. For the buses, when they come in, we would propose some improvements down near the gym to actually make the queuing for the buses even a little longer. So they could have a longer line if they want. In the afternoon, they may still want to double stack, or if they want to have a long line of buses, there is length to do so. Another feature of this is that, this doesn't exist now. Let me go back to an existing condition. If you were coming off Fen, there is a sidewalk, but that sidewalk ends around the service area. There's no connection by sidewalk from the service area to the sidewalk near the main entrance and back out to reservoir. In this site development option we're looking at, we get the sidewalk off of Fen Road all the way, even through the service area, a safe path for pedestrians that connects all the way to, this is existing at this point, new and then an existing walkway, all the way to reservoir, so complete pedestrian access across the site. This particular, I have two options. They're primarily the same. The biggest difference is in the parking, the main parking area here. This option keeps the dead-end parking that you have. I'll go back to the existing for a moment. The cars, they dead-end here, and then they have to pull out and come back out. That's what happens in this concept. But I'm going to go ahead to another slide, which develops that a bit better and gives you about an additional 13 parking spaces by expanding that lot. And now it's not a dead end. When cars come into the site, they can circulate a bit better around here, and if you want to see those side by side, let's see. That's the difference, is the cars coming around here with this little bit of dead end, and then this expands the parking and doesn't have a dead end at all. But other than that, both of these concepts are the same premise. There would also be a little bit of widening on the property at the Fen Road access, so that the buses would have the two-way as well, so they can come in and come out. Other improvements, things that we were exploring were accessibility around the site, accessibility to a field area that's used for recess. We need to, if it's used programmatically by the school, we do need to provide an accessible route, so there would be some improvements there. Also, an accessible route to the swings and an accessible route, well, this is the sidewalk generally that you have now, would just be improved. This is where buses currently drop off. Students walk up this walk, and they come in, actually, a back door, is what I would call it. And we'd maintain that route, just improve it a bit, and that has access to the play area for the upper grades. The... There would be some accessibility improvements for the other play areas. They're hard to see with the aerial superimposed, but there's a play area over here and over here. These are existing playscapes that we just want to make sure that we can get accessible routes, but the existing playscapes would remain, our understanding is that they're very well maintained by the district and kept up with safety standards and things. So, there wouldn't be improvements to the surfacing or the playscape themselves, just the access to them would make sure that that's all good. And if we can, we'd also like to have some pretty minor improvements to the outdoor asphalt play area as far as new markings go. They have pavement markings and things. The preschool, sorry, the kindergarteners and first graders play out here at swings and a playscape, so we are looking at improvements to give them access to their play area, and I'll get into that a bit more when we show you the floor plan. Right now, what happens, along this face of the building, students have direct access from their classrooms. There's doors out of each classroom to come outside to the play area. Security-wise, that's not recommended, and I know that your security people are not too keen on having those access doors. We'd rather have one controlled entrance or egress along that wing of the school, rather than have each classroom have access. Sometimes doors get left open, things like that. So, we are changing, we're proposing to change the access to the play area. There are courtyard improvements, which I'll go over shortly as well. I think those are pretty much the highlights. If there are any questions?
Any questions of Jennifer? Yes, Cindy.
It's not really a question. I just wanted to say that I really like the idea, I do like the idea of the the parking, the parents separating from the buses, but also even that island. I believe Connecticut River Academy has that same concept, where they have the fence in the middle so that you can only cross at a one certain point, so that I am in agreement. I really do like that idea of the plan, and I do like the idea of the classrooms not being able to, the kids not being able to go out through those doors. It wasn't safe years ago, and it's not safe now. I have a story I can tell you, but I won't. When I was substituting for an elementary school one time, we had a little guy just run away from me. So, yeah, I really like everything you're presenting today. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy. Carol?
I really like the way you figured out the traffic pattern. My only question would be where the buses are. If there's someone who's unfamiliar to the school, and they might be coming the first time, what will prevent them from coming in on Fen Road?
Sure. So we would need to have clear signage right at that entrance.
Okay.
I do think that Brennan might have more, Brennan White, who's not here with us, that he might have more specifics on how that's, where that signage would be located and how that would be managed. The one thing I can say, but, you know, not being him, is that if somebody were to, I believe there would be signage right at the Fen Road driveway. If a car were to come in this way, they're likely going to be hung up in this parking lot and not... There'll probably be additional signage even at this at this point, that says, hey, you're entering during certain hours, you're entering this bus way, and you just can't go. And they're going to have to sit and wait at this parking lot and not go any further. So I think a lot of it would be with signage. I would like Brennan to address that at the next meeting, if possible.
Yeah, I think the district might also man it with somebody, Carol initially, until it's kind of known. And then the other thing, too, they didn't mention yet, but when I talked to Brennan, there's a choke point here, a connecting point where the crosswalk is. Oh, yeah, right there. We could actually opt for a gate there, so that gate could be closed during the bus and drop-off process, so there is no cross-contamination, I guess is the best way to put it, which I think is a great idea. I think we should probably look into that. But we have it now at the high school, right? The security for the high school mans both the entrance and exits to make sure that parents aren't doing it. Unfortunately, today, the world we live in, that's what it takes, because, you know... And I get, everybody leads busy lives, but no one wants to pay attention to the rules. So it's going to fall on the district, really, but there'll be big signs down on Fen Road. Buses, I'll make this up, buses only, you know, from 8:15 until 9:30, something like that, and then again at 2:30 till 3:30, and there'll be big signs there. That's typically what's done. I don't know, Lou, if you want to chime in, you're more than welcome. You're muted.
I can jump in, that John Wallace has that type of signage out front. They have a smarter structure.
I didn't know you were with us. Muted. Yeah, no, I agree entirely. That's a, you know, a real important point for us to control, just managing traffic. I think the signage that we would have at the base would be, you know, an effective, yeah, we might have a few days of chaos of people just not realizing what they're getting into, where they'll be stuck in line behind 25 buses for a while, but that would be, you know, I think is a very good separation of the the potential risks here, and eliminating the double stacking, if at all possible, for the buses. You know, eliminates that chance of a kid wandering between a bus that nobody can see. So these are really good conceptual options for us to work with.
I think the other thing, too, Carol, we need to really take into consideration, too, it is all one way now, right? So it's one in from Reservoir Road and out Fen Road, so the student population, when it comes to parents already, are kind of used to that, so then they know that they shouldn't be able to come up Fen Road.
Yeah, my concern is more for people who aren't familiar with the building. They may be coming, grandparents' special friends' day, I mean, there are a number of times people come to the building. I also want to comment on the extra 13 spaces in the front of the building. I think that's fabulous, because whenever there's something going on at school, there is never enough parking. So, if there's a way that we can include that in there, I think that would be a great option as well.
Yeah, I've actually asked Brennan to see if we can even squeeze more additional parking there. The more we could get, the better. So he's taking a look at that, too, and he'll be able to get back to us. Anything else, Carol?
Yes.
No? Steve?
I think that was it. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Sylvia?
Thank you. Yes, I do love the separation. The second slide that Jennifer shared with us, with the additional 13 parking spaces, is wonderful. And in fact, it being next to the gym would probably work out very well for future civic activities that would occur, and Steve, you mentioned trying to get more parking spaces. I would concur with that. If we can get more parking, I think it would help in the long run, so... And I also like Jennifer's suggestion of reducing the number of points of egress along that wing. And that's, the last question I had, Jennifer, I'm sure it's been thought of, but it's safety bollards along the sidewalk, so that a car going a little bit too fast doesn't come up on the sidewalk, you know, somewhat of a clear separation between the asphalt and the sidewalk. I know I've been pushing for that at all of our elementary schools due to the nature of pickup and delivery. I don't know if that was been thought of.
It has, and you know what? I'm actually surprised that it's not specifically called out on these plans, because I do know from working with Brennan on many other projects, you know, very recent ones, too, that he's a major proponent, we are at KBA, for bollards or some sort of structures along, especially the main entrance, where you have people pulling up, dropping off, and everything. And for other security reasons, too, having those bollards there or some sort, whether it's a large plan or whatever it happens to be, that would keep vehicles from getting too close to the school and too close to the main entrance, so I've made note of that. I'm sure it's something that he would want to do here, but we will make sure that that is identified on these plans. It is important to us. We have had owners actually try to value engineer them out, and we really try to hang on to them as much as we can. They're important.
I know I've experienced that same argument many times. Has there been any discussions on, let's see how to phrase this, on limiting the points of ingress and egress to the school during, you know, during the day? I know that naturally, we all want to go to the front office, but are we going to allow ingress at any other points of the school?
I believe it's typically a policy, a district policy thing, that they'll need to enforce, but from an architectural standpoint, the things that we would recommend doing are anything that looks like an entrance, exterior doors that are visible to visitors, pedestrians, whatever. At those exterior door locations, we recommend that there would be signage to say that visitors must go to the main entrance. All exterior doors would be locked. I mean, the only time that this goes to district policy, we would provide hardware so that all exterior doors could be locked. The district may decide to manage through access control-type options to, they may choose to have certain doors open during arrival of students, such as the main entrance or that back entrance when students come off the bus. They may say, no, it's always locked, and we just have a staff member there. I'm not sure how they will use, how policy, you know, what their policy is and how they would do that, but all of the doors would be locked, and I would recommend they all have signage saying that you need to go to the main entrance if you're a visitor. We're not necessarily, except for that wing, where there are a bunch of doors, one per each existing classroom, all those doors would get eliminated, as I mentioned, and there would be only one pair or single here out to the playground. But, for the most part, the other doors will need to remain for proper egress capacity for the number of people in the building, so we're not necessarily eliminating the doors that lead out from these connectors or that lead out at the end of that wing or lead out at the end of this wing. But they're all locked during the day. They should always be locked. Nobody should be propping those open, and there are security measures we can do with sensors and things where they would know. The district could monitor and be told if a door is ajar, for instance.
Okay, that, I do know that Jason pointed out a particular door on one wing during our walkthroughs that had a history of being open. So, but okay, district policy is fine. Thank you very much for the explanation.
Sure.
Any other questions for Jennifer? Yes, Jeremy?
Yeah, a couple of things I've noticed. I really like this layout here, where the traffic flows a lot better. Couple of things that I was thinking as I'm looking at it is that the parking spaces could be at a slant to encourage people to go in a one-way direction as well. And sometimes you get a couple more spaces out of those. I don't know if you guys had thought about that in the situation, or if it doesn't work. Maybe you could kind of explain that a little bit. And the second thing I noticed, when I was thinking about the, every classroom has an exit. Correct me if I'm wrong, but historically, was that because if there was an inside intruder, there would be an easy escape or something out of the school or something, or for rescue operations? What was the purpose of having those doors in the first place? And how does rooting everybody through one door heighten, you know, better security?
I could take the history of it, Jeremy. Every elementary school in Newington in the 50s and 60s was access out to the playground or access outside. All of our elementary schools, every single classroom had a door outside on the interior of classrooms, one to the hallway. It's just something that they did. I think it was done in most schools. And as we've been doing the schools over, obviously, we've been eliminating that, because, you know, in the world we live in today, that's not something that we want to do. But that was what it was for. Again, I know Anna Reynolds, excuse me, E. Green had it at the school I attended, and as they added the classroom wings, they still added those doors. Same as John Patterson and the same as Ruth Shafey, so they were on all of them.
Yeah, and there are a couple, you know, when I work, I work in Vernon, so I'm at the schools there, and they also have them. It must have been an era thing. I just was wondering if there was some kind of a security... Um I I just was wondering if there was some kind of a security thought behind that or if it was just an ease of access thing, which to me is just uh would be an oversimplification in my mind uh for having that uh having that in every classroom. I mean, I assume the classrooms were also connected too. They're interconnected and and I know we're not uh looking at the inside uh design yet. But um you know, there's there's probably, you know, I I I'm just curious about the security of of the door, you know, the doorways and how you can funnel people out if there's a if there's a threat or something, whether otherwise.
A couple of comments on that. As far as multiple doors, one reason why some older buildings had doors directly to the outside from classrooms. Um there are um life safety reasons why in the past they did. Buildings like this when it was built in the fifties and for some time after that were not fully sprinkler buildings um at the time typically. And in Connecticut at least, when the building codes and fire codes were brought about, they required if you didn't have sprinklers, because they did recognize the lifesaving of powers of having sprinkler systems. But if you didn't have sprinklers, they wanted to make sure you had another way out of each classroom. Um and there are different ways to achieve that, whether it was connecting to another classroom and then getting out or that each classroom had an exterior door, whatever the case was, it was it was definitely more stringent and more um exit exits were required if you didn't have sprinklers. This is a fully sprinkler building now and it will continue to be so. Um we are meeting all of this, the requirements, building code and fire code as far as travel distances. We can't have the students travel too far before they get to an exit. So we have to make sure that all the distances to exits meet the code and don't um don't exceed what's allowable. We have to make sure that we account for um a pretty conservative number of how many kids are in each classroom and in each space and make sure that the doors that we do have are large enough to fit all of them. So while we might have less doors, it certainly is something that building codes and fire codes have recognized as acceptable, provided that you have large enough doors and that doors are within a certain distance of where people need to, you know, if they're leaving the classroom, that they don't have to travel too far to get to an exit. Security wise, limiting doors to the exterior is always a preferable option.
Okay, as far as that parking lot goes, and I like you said, I do love that. It's um you know, it's a bit of a a schlep to get into the main entrance uh if I may, uh from that far parking lot to the left there, but that's fine. As long as there's a, you know, sidewalks are definitely going to be. I think out of everything, the sidewalk is the biggest thing here because as you did mention, the surface area kind of the service area blocks pretty much that whole corner off. Really from access, surely you can walk around and and so on. But um I think definitely that cross that crosswalk right there by the service area is is huge. I think that's going to be great um as far as, you know, after school events go and and whatnot, getting in the main entrance.
You did ask about the slanted parking and I'm going to have to have Brennan address that when he returns. I I know he mentioned looking at some other parking options, but I I can't confidently tell you what the issue was with doing slanted parking, if he was able to get any more spaces or not. Um but I've noted that question.
Actually, Jennifer, when we had when we had talked the last time, he had commented that the slanted parking, actually, you get fewer spaces. That's why they went with the perpendicular parking spots. And then he he went with the slanted on the entrance. This one I'm still struggling with as as everybody that that listened to his presentation. Because while this is great, you're going with traffic when you're backing out to get into the space to leave. But to get into that space, the way he sees this is that you would pull in um on the blue line, right? And then you would cross over into the oncoming traffic and then back in. I I don't know that will actually happen. So we're either going to try to flip-flop it and get the parking on the opposite side uh or maybe eliminate the parking here and get more spaces on the interior lots. Which I think would be the best case scenario if we could pick up, I think it's fourteen spaces there.
Right. Um yes, now we did already reverse this back, Steve. We had it reverse angle parking when we right. So we brought it back to the way it's angled now. You know, we we could look at either way. You know, I understand the potential confusion. People are not typically used to reverse angle parking, though I think it's becoming more common in cities and things. Um so this isn't reverse angle. Um it seemed to be that when we met on Friday that more people were confused. Um this is when um I met with um the superintendent on Friday um and uh we went over these these concepts again. And it was discussed that it might be too too confusing and different. Um and circulation might seem awkward if we were to do reverse angle. So we left it as is. Um we are proposing in our schematic um submission to you, which goes to the construction manager and to our estimator as well. We are proposing, uh provided there were no other comments for changes or anything so far. We were proposing getting um pricing on um schematic estimate pricing on uh these options, really the only difference again being um the dead-end parking or better circulation. I'm considering even dropping the dead-end parking since I'm hearing how important parking is to all of you. So we would, we'd have this as a part of the package and it would get estimated so we can see what what these improvements come out to be.
Yeah, actually, I think we should start with this and not price out the uh the dead-end parking. I think this is the option that everybody is going to like over the 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 first option that you showed. Steve, your your hand is still up. I don't know if you left it up or um if you had something else to comment on. I'm assuming.
Oh, my bad, Steve. Thank you.
Yep, no problem. Okay, Jennifer.
All right. So the other thing that um that we looked at was development of the courtyard. Um the courtyard is currently where preschoolers have their outdoor play, their recess time. We also heard during our programming meetings um and visioning that it was desirable to, you know, learning can happen anywhere and one of those places is outdoors and to have outdoor classroom type spaces, outdoor learning. So we did look at a comprehensive courtyard design that would incorporate those outdoor learning areas. Um there's a variety of improvements here that is a comprehensive design, we thought would work really great together. And I'll run through through those. So this, I'm going to zoom in a bit. This patio area is off of the main entrance. The main entrance lobby is is where the hand is. And you would get a view. You do get a view now. When you're in the main lobby, you get a view out to your courtyard. So we'd like to improve that that view in that area. Um there's a bit of a, there's a little overhang over here. Um but have a patio that this is all level. This is only um showing where the overhang currently extends to, but this is a completely level patio. So it would be accessible as far as um to individuals with disabilities or anything. It's it's flush from the that floor level inside the building. You could walk out. It could be um a meeting area for teachers. It could be outdoor dining for teachers. Um it is near the cafeteria. I know that teachers bring their students to the cafeteria and then need to go pick them up again after lunch and go back to the classroom. Um so during nice weather, I think it would get a lot of use um by staff. It could be an outdoor classroom area too. It is near where we're proposing to put a music classroom. That's an existing space. We're proposing to use it as music and we'll get into the floor plan in a bit. But it could be an outdoor somewhat performance area or stage or practice area for the kids too. It is close to music. It does lead down a couple of steps due to grading. Now grading in the um courtyard right now, it's higher on this side, on the west side, and it slopes down toward the east side, um about eight feet overall down to this lower area. So there are a couple of steps down from the patio to get to what would be the preschool play area. Right now, the preschoolers um have movable plastic, um small plastic loose fixtures like the little plastic playhouses and things like that. They also have tricycles. They have some hardscape now so that they can ride around or run around. But we're proposing that this area is more defined for them. It has a what could be like a fun little roadway, a hardscape for them to do, large motor skills, tricycles and such around there. Also, a variety of surfaces. We know that um for certain accreditation standards too, they like to see a few um different surfaces for kids to play on. So we would propose that there's an artificial turf area in here as well as the rubberized play surfacing for an actual fixed playscape, um which they don't have now. And a hardscape um likely with some pavement markings. The outer part would actually be, um I should have mentioned, like an acrylic surfacing, a better surfacing that's durable for the kids to have like this fun little roadway or track. If since that is a little bit lower than the patio, if for accessibility reasons, if you needed to navigate a ramp or anything instead, along the the west wing here, you wouldn't have to navigate any steps and you could make, it's it's not a ramp with railings. It's just more of a gradual um pitch down to get to the play area and access that in an accessible manner. That kind of acts as a mow strip too, um that walkway right against the building. There are outdoor um classroom type areas in each wing. Well, in the two main wings, the west wing and the east wing, internally, we have student commons type areas, breakout areas, places where the kids could collaborate or gather more informally. Um and it is a a spot where um it would be nice to allow the kids to come out and have an outdoor learning area with some sort of seating perhaps. So in this area, we're showing um like boulders and stuff that they could sit on and there would be some sort of um paving or stamped concrete or there's various materials that we've that that we're looking at. But an outdoor area over here and um along the east wing, another outdoor area that's trying to utilize the grade here somewhat like an amphitheater. Um so there could be seating around this this spot in an outdoor classroom. The other feature um is a patio area or terrace area along the um the media center. So the media center could have a direct access outside and that could be used for outdoor learning or there would need to be supervision, of course, for this age, you know, these the age of these children. But it could be used by staff. It could be used as by students. And various plannings would help define that that area so kids were here and not running off all throughout the the um courtyard. It's completely, uh there's all accessible routes so you can access all the points throughout. Part of it is right now, from what we can tell, we would need to have a ramp with railings at one of the locations. But um but we're looking at that and we're actually getting some um some current survey information back so we can make some adjustments if needed based on what the surveyors found. Here again, on the west wing is where the students would be able to come out and access their asphalt outdoor play area and the swings and playscape that's outside for kindergarteners and first graders. So this outdoor, they they'd come out, but that's not at grade. Right now, this whole wing is up about eight inches from grade, so we do need to make it accessible. And we would need um small little ramps or transitions from the doorway to get down to the asphalt area. We were proposing that the memorial garden um that is currently over here may become a feature um in this area. We we understood that it didn't necessarily need to stay in the exact place it was, but it it was a feature that that needed to be a part of the project. So that's a memorial garden. And I think that's Carol's memorial garden. Is that true? All right. So um along a around this image are some different ideas, materials um that we're looking at for development of the courtyard. Here's an idea with um the formed concrete steps, stamped concrete. There's some granite benches, um more stamped concrete. There's some pavers. We would potentially look at permeable pavers because we don't want to add too much impervious surface to the site. So permeable pavers and things would allow better drainage and and give us more infiltration, which is important. As far as the patio and seating area, we could look at fixtures um such as this, which are fixed anchored tables and chairs. This image is actually from, this is a courtyard in a recent school we completed. Wheeler in um in Plainville and they had this seating. I've used them recently on another project too. Um on the other side, some features that could be used in the preschool play area. Climbing, balance, you know, things like that. We're looking at those ideas. Oh, sunshades. Nice feature when kids are outdoors playing. We would potentially, um we'd recommend sunshades near the playscape if possible and um that's just an image. This is, this um particular place, playscape is the one that's shown to scale um on the plan. Colors could change and all of that, but that's a um one that's appropriate for two-year-olds to five-year-olds. So we considered using that sort of playscape. And other, this is still some of the same materials, but we have the rubber surfacing, the artificial turf, acrylic surfacing, uh possibly for that track that goes around the the playscape. Plants that um would be low maintenance and um not require irrigation all the time. So those are plants that we're looking at. And there's again some of the same surfaces that that I showed you. We did look at some uh different playscape options. I mean, that's to be determined, but more of the, we think that what might work best is more of the traditional playscape that people are used to, but maybe just different colors. Does anyone have comments about the courtyard or questions?
Steve, go ahead.
Uh thank you, Steve. All right, so um I love all of the ideas. And what I'm picking up the most is there's no grass in the inner courtyards. So I don't have to keep trying to figure out how to get a lawnmower in there now. Is that correct?
So we would propose ideally doing all of the green area is artificial turf would be ideal. In the budget, we'll, we need to find out. At a minimum, we think that that should be done in the preschool play area. Um the artificial turf over here. But we do, we do want to propose and get pricing for artificial turf throughout the courtyard so that we wouldn't need to bring lawn equipment in and maintain it. It would be much better maintenance uh situation for all of you.
Okay, um and I I like, I love the idea of the uh sun shades that are there. So I see there's probably a lot of opportunities for more in the future, only because I, my mind's going is that I My mind's going is that I, I think that the teachers will take full advantage of this during a nice day to teach outside. Um, but I I love the concepts and the ideas that are being presented here and hopefully there's going to be enough savings. To afford artificial turf, because that's the only thought going through my mind is how the heck do I get a lawnmower in there?
Right.
Okay.
You mean because of the arrangement of everything? I mean, I know how they get a lawnmower in now.
Yeah, but they're still going through the building, basically. So, you know, that that's something that I was, you know. I I I'm, I have a mental block on that one. Jeremy can explain that part of me later.
Right. Yeah, currently for those that might not know, there are some double doors directly across from each other in this connector. Um, which was put on in that last edition. So um there's middle mulleons between those doors and. The in Newington comes in uh with a big lawnmower, removes the mullein, comes through those doors and. Maintains the grass now. That's that's what they do, but we we would like to eliminate that if if we can.
Okay. Are you set, Steve? Yeah, Carol?
Okay, took me a minute to unmute. I love all these ideas. I like the the sun shade as Steve said and the trees because there. There really isn't a lot of shade out there, so when the weather gets warm, the shade will be great. One thing, and it might be a little premature with the planning of plants. If you could add some milkweed, because some of the classrooms do do the life cycle of the monarch butterfly. So. Uh, we had a bunch of milkweed out there and something happened to it. It got cut down. So if that's something that could be in the planning and also when we're talking about this, can we call it a celebration garden instead of memorial garden? I'm still alive.
I apologize. That is true. Is it called a memorial garden now or am I just been making that up? I don't know.
No.
The Carol Duggan garden.
It is.
Thank you.
Carol, we do at our church now is we had a memorial um um fund that people could donate to. And again, you need to be dead, right? So now memorial and honor funds is what we named it.
Okay.
So yours would be an honor, an honor.
I'm so sorry. I mean, yes, thank you. We will fix that. We will refer to it properly.
It it's not a big deal. I just thought it's kind of funny.
Thanks for bringing it up. So um in the milkweed, I think that's a great, great thing to know. Um, that something in there that can tie into curriculum that's useful to to what they're doing is is perfect, so why not? Um, I love when ideas come in, you know, from from teachers like that. Um, so thank you. I will let Brennan know.
Any other questions for for Jennifer on the courtyard? Again, and it's it's blurring, I I I will share with you. I believe while I love the design, I hope that we can afford it. I don't know that our budget carried a courtyard um that had this amount of work in it, but we'll see. We'll see where it is. Um, Jeremy, go ahead.
Just a couple of things, uh, Carol, that's uh, unless I knew something we didn't, you're right there, so that's great. Um, a couple of things that occurred to me, there's a storage shed down there, right? I see that in the plan. Why doesn't the uh. Lawnmower and that sort of thing go in there? Or can that be expanded? Is that existing or?
Thank you for bringing that up. There is actually, the storage shed is not for maintenance equipment. It's actually for, um, and we should correct the uh, or just be more specific on our label. Um, it was actually intended for tricycles. It was actually for preschool equipment that they would need to access. Um, when they need to get things, you know, put things away and and be sheltered. That's what that was for. Currently, the preschoolers have a storage shed that's here outside of what we want to. Make the music room, so they do have storage now. So this is um a new. Enclosure for them to use. We are still looking at the different, how the grades work over here. We think it's best that currently, as I said, this is like the low point. It goes down eight feet across the courtyard. To this lower area and putting a shed down so low. Lower than the play area might not be as convenient um for people, of course. So we'd like to grade it out, so it's uh more of a slight pitch to the storage shed. But what we also have going on is an elevator addition that we're putting over here. And there's currently access from the lower level of the building. Um, out a door over here. So Brennan and um the rest of the team are working on how the grades would work. What doorways would be maintained from the existing building, um or what ones we might block off, but this is for tricycles.
Okay, um, and the other thing I was uh thinking about recently, uh, the town I work in had a big uh. Debate about they're redoing the high school football field with turf. And I just recall there being a uh a contingency of parents that um were kind of opposed to the turf. Because of health reasons for the kids. Um, I, you know, I I don't know if that's been thought about or, you know, you know, there could be. Can, you know, there could be that same thing here. I don't, I don't know.
That's a great question. I am not qualified to answer that. However. Um, one of our principals here at Castle Booze is, what's the name of, do you know the name of the turf that Luke is on the?
Synthetic uh turf council.
It's like a national. Organization. So he knows a lot more.
Yes.
He's a landscape architect, but he's also part of this um council and he knows a lot more about. All those discussions that people have had about turf and is it safe and the pros and cons and all of that, so. Um, we can get more information on that for you.
Yeah, he's an expert. He helps guide um all that, all the requirements for that, so. He's a good resource and he can help us on this, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly think it would be better for maintenance uh for sure. Um, but you know, I, you know, there's some people that have reservations. Is the turf that um has the rubberized pellets? Is that, is that what kind of turf we're talking about or?
I've I've worked a lot with Luke and there's so many different uh nuances, the systems of the crumb rubber that you're talking about. And there's other uh fillers. I hear him talking about it all the time, but honestly, it's Greek to me. But we can get Luke involved in the conversation and he can, he can set us straight.
And most of them are going with the crumb rubber now that what they've done, they've moved away from is the silica sands. They were using the silica sands in the early ones. And because the fields tend to get hot and dry and then the sand starts getting airborne, um so they've moved away from that. And and there are, there's, there's, there's two sides to the fence here with the rubber. Some are, you know, say there's absolutely nothing wrong with it and then the ones that. Think it's no good. There's, you 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 can't prove it doing one way or the other, so.
Luke is very aware of all those conversations.
Yeah.
He can help us for sure.
And maintenance will be an issue here. Um, so we need to try to do the best we can in designing this for him so that we limit that. So Lou doesn't have a headache down the road on how to keep it looking nice.
True, good point.
Okay, um, I don't see anybody else's hand up. So I think Jennifer, are you done?
Well, I'm not.
You wanna keep going?
I could, I could talk for quite a while and I apologize. This is a long meeting for you guys. Um, so thanks for hanging, hanging in with us. Um, so um I'm gonna let Kate Jessup. She's our educational planner. Some of you may recall hearing from her before.
Yeah.
Um, I'm gonna let her chime in on um on this programming diagram and how it led us to a floor plan. That we'll show you in a moment.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. Um, I'm I'm Jennifer Manjali's login, so I apologize for the incorrect naming. Um, but it's lovely to see you all again virtually. So as many of you participate in, um, participate. Participated in or are aware of, we went through a couple of exercises. The first was um a series of visioning where we met with parents, community members, some of you folks. We also met with um, you know, other representatives from the overall, um, you know, school community. And we got a bunch of information about guiding principals, um which set the groundwork for our next set of meetings. Um, we went through educational programming where we met with essentially every staff member at the school, all different um stakeholder groups. Um, representing every different uh person within the building. And we learned a lot about sort of the the goals. So. Our first um pass at doing this, what we typically do is we develop this bubble diagram, right? You know, sometimes we get stuck. In um as we go to design with making sure that we're fitting sort of the Lego blocks into the right space. So this allows us to separate um from the building itself to create this sort of idealized relationship diagram. And as you can see, and I'm gonna let Jennifer, the real Jennifer, um use the cursor, but. You'll see the arrow in the middle is sort of representing the idea of a front entrance. Um, and as you can see, as she already described to you, we have two separate loops for the drop off for buses and parents. So we knew that was an important thing we heard um for from security and and just general. Uh, across the board of the ease of of getting students in and out of the building. Next to, you know, we have the main administrative area at the front of the building, which is essentially going to be the principal's office, the administrative folks. Um, and then there's a lot of other staff members who are part of, you know, an administrative team, however, they are. Uh, more of student support services. So they wanted to be close by, but not necessarily within the same space. We also know that there was a a rich desire um to have sort of public spaces separate from from private spaces. So what that means in a building design is the spaces that the the community is going to come in or they could come in and utilize. The cafeteria, the library media center, the gymnasium. Um, and then some of our special spaces all want to be sort of connected to those larger spaces. So you can see we have the kitchen. Um, sort of shared between the the gym and the wellness area with access sort of at the perimeter of this bubble diagram, knowing that they need to get deliveries. Um, and then the library media center, um sort of at the center of spaces, but connected and ringed by the special programming enrichment rooms that. Um, for the tech technology space, the art and the music. And there was a desire specifically for programming of the tech to be sort of greatly connected. And those spaces tend to want to be sort of towards the front, um especially given that they are, you know, that's potentially somewhere that someone could come into. If there was um a a meeting of some, uh, you know, our presentation. But as you can see, there's actually even a relationship as we cross over the dashed red line to our littlest learners. So keeping them close by to where the specials are because a tiny little three-year-old legs take a long time to navigate long corridors. So. Um, you know, one of the takeaways we had is can we keep those littlest ones closer, first of all, to each other in an early learning type of environment. But also closer to the special spaces. We also heard very strongly about the progression through the grade levels as we move to the private student spaces. Which uh wouldn't necessarily be visited by uh someone coming into the school. So that that there wanted to be a progression and we know that that's even a social emotional piece that students want to move through the progression of a building. Um, so PKK one, two, three, four, sort of in a ring. Uh, of course, thinking a little bit about your building, we were already sort of getting really excited about this piece, but. Also, you'll see the TP, which is teacher planning areas, between the two um. Grade levels, one and two and three and four. And that's a really important thing we want to touch on here because. We heard very strongly from many of the educators and and the leadership team that. There wanted to be a place where student groupings could come out, um where intervention services could be closer, closer to the students. So reading, um, ELL services, all the different um interventions that could be done, but also for general breakout. So for for example, if a student um was work, if you were doing group exercises within the classroom and you just needed it one group to sort of break out. Beyond the classroom, um that there could be visibility and obviously, um, you know, eyes on those students. But that they could go into those areas and work in groups. Um, it also would serve as a space where you could get maybe two grade levels to come together for morning meeting or for a little presentation. Um, and you'll see how that plays out in the plan. And and the sort of gray, which uh, you know, it looks gray on my screen, but it's it should be green. Is that outdoor play. So although um I completely agree uh with with removing exterior doors for safety reasons. Um, we want, we do want that outdoor and indoor connection to happen. Um, so there's, there's an indoor or outdoor learning sort of in between the classrooms and ringing the classroom wings. We also have a, an outdoor learning area sort of connected through the gymnasium. Obviously, that's where your PE would happen on on nice days. Um, so that's essentially what our big takeaway was, is separating public and private as best we can. And, you know, creating, creating those student support spaces closest to our littles and also the major public spaces as close to littles as we could. Now, this solution could be applied to your building, but it could also be applied to a brand new building. So. We took a number of different sort of stabs at what this could look like, what the configuration is, and we met with the um. With the staff um and the leadership to sort of look through a number of options based on applying this diagram to your building. And sort of I'll let Jennifer take into the detail, but essentially what we came up with was. Um, the grade level clusters being the first high-level piece. Um, you know, trying to get the pre-K and K as close together as possible while still maintaining those larger square footages necessary for them for their learning. Um, so the pre-K and the services in pink across the hallway represent those special services like OTPT. Um, therapy, uh, speech and language, which are primarily serving your youngest learners. There's also sort of nursing nearby. Um, and then again, you can see that sort of admin, that that red bubble as the main entrance piece. As we sort of move through the classroom wings, you'll see what Jennifer was referring to. Um, where the now it makes a little more sense, um, the courtyard design is that centerpiece. You have a, the kindergarten in grade one um on, in the one, the west wing or east wing. And then in the center, if you zoom in just a little bit, Jennifer, you essentially get those student commons, which would have soft seating, some benches, perhaps even. Um, and then interactive screens, some whiteboards. And you can see that this is where you're having your learning center, where you could have some interventionists who have uh reading interventionist, English. Um, you know, the Zen space, which is really important to ESL services. Um, as well as a teacher planning area. And the idea of the teacher planning area is that's where educators can come together and collaborate and work together. And also so that um that would have like glazing so that they could serve as the eyes on in some cases to those student commons and breakout areas. If you go around again, it's just gonna be grade one. Um, grade two is at the top of the screen. Um, they're sort of. Put together and they have their own um Zen zone, teacher planning area. Um, the media center remains as it is. It's a very grand space, so it's hard to relocate and quite honestly, very expensive. Um, to put it sort of closer to the front entrance. Um, and your technology classrooms, which needed that direct connect to the media center, still would remain in that location. As we sort of move around.
Jennifer, excuse me, if, may I interrupt?
Sure.
Okay, um. I'm not understanding the purpose of a Zen room. The last time a Zen room was used on me, I got locked in it for twenty-four hours.
Oh.
As a student. And so I'm, I'm a little leery with the terminology and the purpose of these rooms. So could someone explain what a Zen room is?
Jason, can you, uh, do you want to take that one? I'm Jason's here. Um, so it was understood to us that it's a part of the program that they have.
Sorry, I un, sorry, I turned my camera on, but I un uh unmuted. I'm at a six-year-old's birthday party too, so. Um, going, going back and forth between, between that. Uh, so the Zen, we had put those in the ed specs. It's kind of like that breakout, calm down space. It's more of a calming space when a student needs to take a break, having a space in the, in the hallways. Um, that students can kind of go to and calm down. And take their time to kind of get themselves back to class or do some work if they need to. Uh, we currently kind of have them in like the special ed rooms or different places around the building, but they can become like disruptive. Then other students have to relocate or things like that. So I'm just having a place for students to be able to go and and do work. And um easily accessed in the hallways, so.
Alright, so it's the same room that I got locked in as a child for twenty-four hours. Okay, I understand now. Thank you.
Yeah, we don't, but we don't lock anyone. No one goes in there. No one gets locked into the, into the spaces. Um, so it's just kind of more of a calm, calming space to be able to do work.
And we would make sure that um obviously there would be transparency, so there would be windows into that space. The door locks could also be designed to be not locking. So that 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 hopefully, and I'm so sorry that happened to you. That's um a terrible story. So. Um, you know, the idea that 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 space is needed for the SEL piece, um but obviously we'll. But obviously we'll make sure that we do that appropriately and in line with sort of what the need is as we go on.
Jennifer, thank you for the kind thoughts. It's just another part of the journey of my charming personality, but thanks a lot.
No problem. And so just to sort of wrap up, you'll see on the other side, on the east wing, there's the other learning center. So it's close to the grade three and grade four, sort of upper level elementary students. You'll see there's a sort of a conference area for the sort of, I don't want to call it the back of the building, but sort of the classrooms that are a little further from the conference areas at the, at the main entrance. They have the, the, the grade level clusters, the same breakout and student commons, teacher planning relationship. And then some of the interventionists, which math is usually or typically more of a need as you're moving into those rigorous math skills, which tend to be as, granted, they can be in both. But the idea is that also that math intervention and interventionists could go over and service students in the student commons and breakout area. And as we just wrap up, there's grade four and then the sort of gymnasium. You can see the music room, which was in the back, we've sort of brought to the forefront of the school. One really exciting thing we heard during our programming was that this room was actually designed to be a music room. And they missed the idea of having students and hearing singing and music. So we're hoping that we can bring back that piece. So that's essentially where the overall layout comes from. I think Jennifer has been working through some of the accessibility challenges, some of the, the, the deep diving. But I'm happy to answer any questions sort of about the overall layout and how we applied that bubble diagram onto this plan.
Anyone have any questions for?
Yes.
Yes, Steve.
Okay. So on the floor plan, I'm not seeing a teacher's lounge, which is an existing condition. And I don't see the conference room, room number six that currently exists at Anna Reynolds. Is there a teacher's lounge?
Yeah. So there's, if you look all the way in the bottom right, there's the meeting room. That is a conference area. And there's also the other meeting room on the other, the sort of north end of the plan. So those are the conference areas. And then we did provide, this was one of the pieces of feedback we got from Jason and, you know, the others while we were working is providing a teacher dining area. Now, to be perfectly honest, teacher lounges are a thing of the past. This is really just where they'll be able to pop in, eat their lunch. The teacher planning areas are more for collaboration and the work purposes. So that's why we put those closer to where the teachers are going to be with their students. So those teacher planning areas and all of the ones in green represent sort of where, where the, the collaboration is going to occur. The only one at the front is the teacher dining area so that the teacher would be able to drop the kids off at the cafeteria and then eat their lunch close by, which is a piece of feedback.
Jennifer.
Great.
And then the other area that I recall in my notes is the PTO room where parent, the the, the parents could store stuff and they had, it's right across from the office right now, the main office.
PTO closet.
But I.
Yeah. So there's a couple of locations. We do have some storage in the cafeteria, but that's likely to be utilized by tables and chairs and different things needed for that space. As you can see, we also relocated the PE office out of the back of house area attached to the gymnasium across the hall to give them a little more control. So that will free up some storage space sort of in the back of house there, which could probably be utilized by the PTO. It's important, we understand, but you know, at the same time, we wanted to first and foremost, make sure we had our eyes on the student space.
Nope. That, thank you.
Any other questions?
Jennifer, do you want to touch on the accessibility in the auditorium or a little bit, the cafeteria?
Sure. I could do that. Yeah. And, and thank you, Kate, for running through the plan very well. I appreciate it. So one of the challenges, I guess, with the cafeteria and getting access to the stage for performances. We are supposed to, in order to meet the Americans with Disabilities guidelines, we're supposed to get from within the space, audience should be able to gain access without traversing stairs, gain access up to the platform or stage, whatever you want to call it. So we looked at how to fit, fit a ramp in this space. And it required us, right now, the lobby, right now, the end of cafeteria and end of stage is really in line with the exterior wall. We actually had to capture some of the lobby space so that we could get this access ramp up to the platform. It required, in order to meet accessibility guidelines, it required quite the, the length. I think it's a two-foot rise, which is 24 feet of ramp, for instance, plus you need landings. So you would be able to access the stage here. Or in a quicker manner, you could take the, a short flight of stairs, as you do now, to access the platform if you happen to be in the cafeteria. So either way, we'll get you there. We were concerned about making the lobby space too small and too tight. So we captured this area here, which currently is in the main office. We opened that up. We're proposing opening that so that this feels a little bit slightly larger so that it's a proper lobby versus really skinning that up and, and making it too cramped. So we did take some space on this side, give it back since we took all this space over here. The elevator, as you know, is the other accessibility issue, one of the primary focuses of this project. As far as additions go, it's the only addition, an elevator here being added. It's within the courtyard side and that allows us to bypass the stairs. So if somebody were to come in the main entrance, they would come down this hallway. This, I apologize, this should not really look as a wall, like a wall right now. You, you would come down the hallway and you could go down the stairs currently and get to the gym. This would not be there. But if you cannot traverse the stairs, you would go into this little foyer, into the elevator, go down eight feet, come out of the elevator and be at level with the gymnasium. So there's an entrance, two entrances, front and back to this elevator. And the addition also has an elevator machine room. We're working through, through that with, with an elevator manufacturer. And yeah, on the, on the lower level, we can get access. We can bring the elevator down to get access to the lower level as well. The lower level being mechanical spaces and some storage areas. We, we should be able to gain access there. That's our goal. However, we have very little head height. So we're trying to work, work out those details. That's about it for accessibility. Are there any other questions about the floor plan?
Um, Steve Sylvia here. On the gymnasium, I noticed that currently there's no seating for parents that come by or anything of that nature, you know, the, be it the evening park and rec utilization of the facility or whatever. Is, do we have an opportunity to put any type of seating in that space?
So we actually didn't hear that that was during our programming meetings, we didn't really hear that that was important to provide seating in there. However, it's something that could be done. It's not a very large gymnasium. However, it's, you know, it's for the elementary, for the, for the most part, you know, we're serving the elementary school kids and having, you know, a full-size basketball court with proper sidelines. Then, you know, there's no way to get, let's say, a, a proper size meeting, National High School Federation standards for, for sports courts and stuff. We'll never meet those standards to have a full court, proper sidelines and seating. That won't happen. If the school is interested in having seating that makes the play area that much smaller, that certainly could be done. I think it would only be a small section. I don't know, you know, how much seating you'd really be able to get in there. It would probably just be a small section, but it would eat into the court space they have now. It's just not a big gymnasium.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate the thought.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a, I have a question.
Yep, go ahead.
How does the, the kindergarten classrooms, how does the square footage compare to the existing kindergarten classes? Is it the same or is it smaller? It's hard for me to tell.
Oh, sure. Um, oh, I wish I was completely prepared for that question. I did analyze the existing versus the proposed. And I tried to make them as equal as we could. I'd love to tell you within a few square feet whether we're, we're over or under, but I really think it is a matter of like 10 or 20 square feet that it might be different in size. So I tried to make it comparable. The one thing about kindergarten classrooms, if we were to make them even larger, we, it would start taking away from either other program areas or breakout or student commons areas, which we think are important to. Looking forward with how, you know, educational models are, we really want to keep those spaces. So I wouldn't propose making them necessarily any bigger. And the other thing is if we do make them bigger, we start to have code implications needing two ways out of the rooms. It's just another little hurdle. So I try to keep them as close to the existing as possible. I think they're, I think they're about 980 square feet. That's off the top of my head. And I think you're right around there for your existing ones as well.
And are there bathrooms? Is that, it's hard for me to see. Okay. That's what I was.
Yes.
That's what I was hoping for. Okay.
Yes. They have individual bathrooms. They wouldn't necessarily be sharing them. They would be one per room, I think, is the best based on what we've, what we've heard.
Perfect. Thank you.
Sure. And the preschool would pretty much take over the area that the current kindergartners are in, and they would have those bathrooms as well. And then opposite side, these, the OTPT and therapy rooms, which would ideally have the bathrooms too. They're taking advantage of the 1950s kindergarten classrooms. Now will be new and improved. But they will have, they will have toilets within them. And if we ever needed, if you ever needed to convert these spaces for another future preschool classroom or a special education space, I think these spaces size-wise and the fact that they have the, the toilet room right there, they would probably serve you very well.
Those spaces are ideal for kindergarten. I actually taught kindergarten in one of the new proposed kindergarten rooms and the room was very small. So that's why I was asking that question.
So in the proposed, just so you know, I don't have an overlay, but it would be interesting if I did. We did take down a few classrooms on either side of the corridor. These, and it made those existing classrooms larger. This is not taking over a current classroom square footage, if that's making any sense. So there's like, there's a demising wall. I think there's two walls, one here, one here. And those are coming out so that we can have larger kindergarten spaces. We know that although they're little, these little kids need more space in their rooms for, for various, you know, activities and, you know, functions that they do. So, so they are larger than your current rooms. The other classrooms though, first grade, second, third and fourth are taking existing classroom sizes. Those are not expanding in size. Okay.
Yeah. Mostly the kindergarten I was concerned about.
Yes.
But that's good. Good to, good to hear. Thank you.
Any other questions or Jennifer? Jennifer, do you have anything else for us?
I have one last.
I did have one. I'm sorry, Jennifer.
Go ahead, Steve.
All right. So I love everything I'm seeing, Jennifer, and I understand, I think you're meeting all of the program requirements that we have currently. Have you given any thought to the potential that the Anna Reynolds district grows? And now instead of having the population that I have today, that I now need to add another, say, four classrooms. Because Jason is doing a wonderful job and, and everybody is basically doing their necessary growth of the human population. So are there any options or thoughts of where we might be able to expand if we needed to?
I'm going to be honest with you that I have not focused on studying expansion possibilities.
Jen, just to, this is Jason to jump in. We did, the ed specs do call for the possibility of two additional classes. So that would be where we talked about that learning center two, where her cursor is, learning center one possibly. Losing that, you know, therapy room would come out. So the ed specs go to that element of the potential for two additional classes and being able to re-convert those spaces. If we were to get to the point of four, you know, additional spaces and expand, that's where I think we would have to go back, you know, at the district and at your level to look at different things. But like most schools, when they see expansions like that, we would lose things like music or art and go on a cart is what ends up happening when schools become that large for time being. But so we do have the potential for that, if you know, expansion at, up to classes that we had talked about throughout the previous, previous meetings and process. So.
Or we just redistrict the school system and the kids.
Yeah, that would be, that would be on your part, but we do have the space for two potential as we had, as we had planned, because we knew there's that potential for bubbles. So that still does exist and they had put them in areas like by the K and the one and the three and the four. So at least it might not be adjacent to the specific grade level, but it's in close proximity to, to them.
All right. Thank you, Jason. I appreciate that thought.
And that's where the, those additional rooms by the pre-K rooms are prepared for that future pre-K expansion someday to getting to, you know, if it becomes universal pre-K three at some point, then there is that, that space or for the additional there. And then also that future special education room, potentially if we look at students in, I know the autism programs self-contained has expanded. There's a potential to be able to bring students to, you know, Anna Reynolds if, if needed, by keeping them in their homeschool. So there is those potentials for expansion.
Excellent. I appreciate the sharing of your thoughts on that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes. Thank you, Jason, for putting it in that light that we certainly did talk about a lot. I, for some reason, was taking that question as more of, because we do get asked this as architects a lot. Well, where would we expand the building? Where would we add on? And I, I was kind of on that wavelength, not so much thinking internally about, which is important. Jason and KBA have met a lot to talk about if we needed to expand internally, what, what could be flexible space to do so relatively easily, especially during bubbles that you get, you might get in your population. So thank you. Okay. The last thing that I, I just wanted to update you on is that we are still studying some options for the exterior facade. This, these images are of another project that we did, very similar construction and low roof height and how we were able to transform the, the envelope. That's the before picture and then. That's the before picture and then the after picture. We are using that as a model for, a, a possible model for Anna Reynolds because of the similarities. And we really liked the materials as far as this gave us a very durable, this is a precast base to the wall, which we're, we're considering. It's a very durable base to your wall. We know that at Anna Reynolds, and these are pictures of, of your school, especially at the west side of the building, the envelope is right down to the asphalt. And we know the plows come through and there's probably salting that goes on. And kids are coming out here to play in the winter and everything, which is why I'm sure there's snow removal then. But when we come down to grade, we want to make sure that we have something durable. So that's one reason why we were looking at this, this concept. And we're, we're also looking at how the structural system of Anna Reynolds, there's posts every four feet, you can't even see them, they're behind this white wall panel. There's a structural system that we're taking a look at to see what building envelope system can work well with the structure you have. Having a structure four feet on center isn't very common that we see that. But it's something we need to contend with. And, oh, and in this, this image also, when we're able to get above the base of the wall, changing to another material such as, in this case, it's a metal wall panel. It's something we are considering for Anna Reynolds. So here's a possibility of, one of our studies, we're still looking at window patterns, but we know that the district, we've heard that they want operable windows. So we're keeping operable windows in mind for the classrooms. We think the durability of the base is important. So we're looking at whether that would be masonry, cast stone or precast, as it was in this example. And then a different treatment above that, most likely. So we're still trying to explore some, some options. We're speaking with the construction manager already. And we're trying to look at, look at cost, look at how the, the envelope can be improved. But I wanted to, to let you know and see if you had any comments about the potential look of these wings. This, this kind of system would be what we're really trying to figure out for these long wings, the east and west wings. Pretty much end to end is, is this, which will need to be replaced. So if you have any comments on, on materials or, or look, I'd love to hear them.
Anybody have any thoughts? Again, I, I personally love the look. I like the, the top left, the, the after picture of how that is. I just think it's taken an old tired building and that new skin on it, it'll make it look brand new from the exterior. And we know the interiors are going to look brand new. So I, I don't know if those are the colors, but, you know, that's exactly what we're going to be looking at. But something similar to that, I think, is going to be really nice. And I'm not opposed to the masonry either on the bottom and the other one with a different one to lay out. Oh, I don't know, the bottom one looks maybe a little bit too barnished for me, but it's hard to tell on that little picture as well.
Sure, yep.
Yeah, I, me, Steve, I'm sort of leaning like you are. I enjoy the, not the, not the long linear bottom picture, but the one in the left-hand corner because of there's contextual changes and the material change gives it a little bit more of a, gives it a lot more contextual feel to it in my thing. I mean, I'm already envisioning a lukabond being used on the upper half, but that's just me personally. But any kind of pa- paneling that you were suggesting, Jennifer, would be nice. As long as we don't have to paint it.
Yes, so maintenance.
Yeah, because basically, we don't have a great track record of maintaining things. So if we can get a good 20 years out of it before I have to think about it, I would be grateful.
Although I think we also need to, to also remember that the skin that's on the building right now, I think was put on 35 years ago, which probably had a life expectancy of 20. So we definitely get our money's worth out of it. It might even be older, it might have been late 70s when they did this, late 70s, early 80s, when they took all the windows out. Okay, Jennifer, do you have anything else for us or Paul?
Yes, I, my hand is, I just want to say.
Oh, I'm sorry, Cindy, go ahead.
It's okay, I agree with you guys. I like that look. It looks sharp and looks new and it's, it's, I, I really do like the colors. I mean, if it's not that, it's not that, but I like the look.
Yeah, and what, what's important about the feedback for the architects right now is that, you know, they can keep moving forward. We're not going to see obviously something identical to this, but at least they have a direction to move in, right? Instead of going in a direction and then we come back and go, oh my God, no, we can't stand that. So it's good that we're sharing our thoughts with them.
Thank you.
Exactly, the intent is so we can take this feedback and complete our schematic design package due next week.
Yeah, I was, I thought I was done and I know you're probably all wishing I was, but you did ask me.
I did, I did think this was going to be a quick meeting, so I'm never going to predict that again.
Oh, really? You thought it was going to be quick? Well, see, we haven't really.
When I say quick, I don't, I, I guess not two hours.
All right. Yeah, I'd like to be having cake too, but anyway. But you did ask us about a schedule too, so I almost, I almost forgot about that. I don't know that you can actually all see this on your, on your computer screens well, but I believe what was asked of us at the last meeting was kind of like a side-by-side comparison of the schedule and would we still be able to, you know, to meet the schedule and the needs? So the, the blue bar graph up at the top, that was the contractual schedule that was provided to us in the RFP. And it really had design going out until June of 2022. We had discussions, since you put an RFP out for a construction manager, and I know that, that Marnie Lisca with CSG was looking at consolidating that schedule a bit, meeting in end of March timeframe for the end of design. So we looked to see if we can still stay on that schedule. And, oops, shoot, sorry, let me go back. So we, we think that that still is possible based on recent experience on some other projects and how long it takes to get approvals and everything. We still think that we could meet the end of March to deliver bid documents. So this has our schedule being schematic design mid-July. So next week, we'd be giving the, the package to the construction manager in our estimator. And while we're waiting for them to reconcile, we actually do keep moving in development. We do need to pick up that, we do need to continue to work and not wait fully for estimates to come back. But we do recognize that if the estimates come back where we need to readdress things, we recognize that, you know, we are required to, to meet your budget. So we, we try to move forward with things that we know that, that need to happen regardless. Anyway, if you have any questions on the schedule, be happy to answer those.
Anyone? No, but I will thank you for, for staying on top of it and, and basically meeting or exceeding, you know, the deadlines that we gave you. So I think it's.
Yeah, I mean.
Well.
Steve here, so the, the yellow bars are the optimist in us and where we think we'll land or where we're tracking to.
Yes.
Yeah, the yellow is more revised.
The yellow is revised.
Yeah.
I mean, it's really so we can pick up the summer again, you know, so we can try to pick up some work, get the bids.
Absolutely, absolutely. I, I, no, 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 no. So whatever we have to do to help you facilitate the yellow, please keep us apprised. So we can work to help you guys maintain the optimism.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Paul.
I'm done. Okay, I'll try not to say anything else.
Okay, we're going to move on. Our, our next item is owner's project manager update. They are not with us this afternoon. They did get the invite. I didn't hear otherwise. I don't, they must, something must have happened. I do have a text in to them and when I hear back, I will, will let you know. So next item is any other business pertinent to the committee? I don't have anything. Jeff, do you have anything? For us?
When do you wish to have your next meeting?
Well, it would be next Thursday, right? That would be our, oh, no, I'm sorry, would be two weeks. What's today? Today is.
No, your next, your regular meeting would be next Thursday.
Correct.
So.
Yeah, so we will have our meeting next week. I want to stay on that schedule. I'm looking at the wrong calendar. I'm looking at June.
Very good.
Okay, all right. Public participation, and I don't think we have any members of the public. No, we do not. So we can move on. Comments by members? Anybody have anything that they would like to add? No, it's been a long night. I want to thank Jennifer and Paul. I mean, and Kate, is it correct as a Kate, Mike?
Yes.
Yes, yes, for their presentation tonight. I think we got a lot of valuable information. Definitely, I think you've done a good job of keeping the committee informed and, and keeping our project moving forward. With that, then a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? I didn't think so. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night, have a good weekend.
Good night, everybody. Take care.
James, thank you as always. Jeff, thank you.
Happy to help.
You always are.
Now I'm off to the fire department.
Yeah. Good luck.
Swearing in time again.
Yeah, good night, good night.
Good night.